Yesterday, I probably went overboard with outside. Yesterday was bad and uh.
That's why she wasn't happy with yesterday, huh?
You know, she loved.
Yeah, she definitely loved it, but I guess I pushed it too much.
No, don't do that.
I tell you, uh, it's a lot better walking over that way in the morning. Much better. There's a lot of asphalt in sunlight. Yeah, I've been pretty good, you know, but I got some routines, you know. Try to stick to them, but I try to drink a lot of food. A lot of food.
I'm glad to see you back.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, at six o'clock, we want to welcome you to the Oconee County Board of Commissioners' public hearing for the 2020 tax millage levy. This is the first of three public hearings we're having. Uh, the next public hearing will be on Tuesday, July twenty eighth, uh, excuse me, today is July twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Uh, the next public hearing will be August fourth at six P M. And the last one will be August twenty fifth at five thirty P M. If you're joining us virtually, hopefully using a computer or smart device to ask a question or make comments during the public comment portions of the meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. With that, we'll turn it over to Wes or Justin, whoever's running this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, come before you tonight, uh, to tentatively adopt the millage rate, which will require an increase in property taxes by four point seven percent in the unincorporated areas and three point seven nine percent in the incorporated areas. The tentative increase will result in a millage rate of six point six eight six in the unincorporated areas. That has remained that way for, uh, well over a decade. Um, the proposed tax for each home on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home will be forty one dollars and forty cent on the, uh, proposed in the unincorporated area. In the incorporated area, the tentative increase will result in a millage rate of seven point six one six percent. And, uh, that equates to approximately thirty eight dollars and thirty six cents on a fair market value home of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As you alluded to, Mr. Chairman, the next two, uh, events for this, uh, property tax notice is, uh, August fourth and August twenty fifth at six P M and five thirty P M respectively. Are there any questions I can answer at this time? I'd be glad to.
Any questions, uh, commissioners? I think very much so. Now we open up for any public comment. Would anyone like to comment on the, uh, proposed millage levy? Anyone from Zoom? Very good. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments and we'll close the public hearing and move into our regular scheduled meeting. So again, welcome to our regular scheduled meeting. Today is Tuesday, July twenty eighth. Again, if you're joining us from, uh, virtually, hopefully using Zoom. In just a moment, we're going to ask you to stand for a moment of silence. And then after that moment of silence, we're going to ask Kathy Hayes to lead us into the place of flag.
Thank you. I'm by the way. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, our first item of business will be to approve the agenda.
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second. We have a motion second, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is statement and remarks from citizens. Uh, this is from, for anything that is not on our agenda for tonight. Would anyone like to speak? Any statements or remarks from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Yes.
I'd like the, uh, uh, opportunity to correct the misunderstanding from the last meeting we had on the variance request P twenty dash zero zero three five. Just to correct the record, on that, uh, variance, I, the vote I made was yes and not no. Seems like there's a misunderstanding on that vote and it was a little quick. I kind of delayed a little bit. I just wanted to clarify my thoughts on that.
Okay, very well. Any objections, making corrections, amendments for that?
No.
All right, Kathy, if you would, make those adjustments. Any other statements or remarks from commissioners?
Just glad to be here.
Good to have you back, too.
Yeah, appreciate all the thoughts and prayers. Um, I got that surgery off my bucket list and hooked it out. I won't ever have to have that again.
All right, next item of business will be just to discuss, uh, any amendments to the ordinance regulating the sale of alcoholic beverages. Daniel?
We're doing this by means of, uh, just an amendment to our existing ordinance. What we're doing is creating, uh, a definition of a catered function, which is an event conducted by a bona fide nonprofit charitable or civic organization, where alcoholic beverages will be sold by a licensed alcoholic beverage caterer, as we will discuss what that is in a second. The proceeds from the event have to be used for charitable civic purposes. The event must not exceed one twenty-four hour period and has to comply at all times, it has to comply with the times of service that we use for our restaurants. A licensed alcoholic beverage caterer can be one of two things. Uh, state law ties our hands just a little bit on this. It can be the holder of a B four, C four, D four alcoholic beverage license who applies and is issued the license for, uh, to be an alcoholic beverage caterer, or it can be an alcoholic beverage caterer from another jurisdiction. Um, state law just says if you've got a license to be an alcoholic beverage caterer in one jurisdiction, you get to do it in other jurisdictions. Um, the way it will occur is that the person who has the caterer's license will apply for a permit. They'll tell us all the things they need to tell us in that permit and we'll charge fifty dollars per permit. We'll turn it around in five business days. And same hours of operation as the restaurants, um, they've got to prove that they've done the, um, the training. We maintain our eighteen year old server requirement. They have to tell us, um, you know, exactly where they're going to be serving and they have to, they have to comply with the U D C in terms of where events are located. And, um, they can't, of course, be within a hundred yards of a church or two hundred yards of a school building. Um, one other minor change that we wrapped into this is, uh, you know, we've had several instances where we've had an agent change for a licensee. And we've said, uh, if they know about it, they've got to notify us fourteen days prior to a replacement. If there's an unexpected replacement, they've got to notify us immediately. They've got to do the training at the first available class after the replacement. And if they don't do that, that's grounds for suspension of the license. Uh, we also, one other minor thing, we removed the, the requirement of mandatory attendance of an applicant unless the board wants to require that. That seemed like something that we started out doing it, but now you didn't serve any good purpose at this point. You always require that we don't have to do that now.
Very good. Any questions for commissioners on that? Very good. Any public comments from the audience? Any public comments virtually? Very good. That'll serve as our first public hearing on this, uh, ordinance change and we'll discuss it again in our next meeting, uh, next week. Next item is to discuss revisions to the Animal Services Ordinance. Crystal?
I apologize, my glasses. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity, Chairman Daniel, and to the board members, um, to present to you the first reading of the newly proposed Animal Services Ordinance. I'm Crystal Borisco, manager for Oconee County Animal Services. We identified the need to review, revise, and simplify the ordinance to more le, to more clearly defined technical terms, provide clarity, address the growing problems associated with residential pet overpopulation, and maintain the commitment to the mission, vision, and values for both the animal services operations and enforcement functions. Changes to the ordinance will chart a path toward closer alignment of the functions of Oconee County Animal Services with the needs of Oconee County. Key changes include the following. Article two, we've added some, um, definitions to the ordinance. Article four, section four dash one through four dash eleven, responsible dog ownership. This section refers to the Responsible Dog Ownership Law, OCGA four dash eight dash twenty through four dash eight dash thirty-three, and is listed in our ordinance instead of just referencing the state code. Article five, owner responsibilities. Section five dash three, duty of the owner to keep animals under control. Section five dash four, duty to keep animals under restraint while on the owner's property. Section five dash five, duty to animal, duty to keep animals under restraint while off the owner's property. Section five dash six, specific requirements for confinement. Section five dash seven, number of animals. Section five dash eight, animal nuisance. Article nine, cruelty to animals. This section is referenced from state code OCGA sixteen dash twelve dash four and is listed out instead of just referencing the state code. Article thirteen, managed care of feral cats. Those are all the additions to the newly revised ordinance. Uh, the Animal Services Advisory Board has reviewed and approved the proposed changes. Um, and I can answer any questions if you have any at this time.
Very good. Any questions?
No.
No.
I would like to extend a huge thank you to Daniel Haygood, um, for his guidance and assistance through this process. And I thank you, Chairman Daniel, and the board members for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to make comments on this ordinance change? Anybody virtually? This will close our first public hearing on this ordinance and we'll talk about it again next week. Our next item is to discuss the Georgia Department of Transportation Local Administered Project Certification and Title Six Non-Discrimination Agreement. Jody?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's good to see you, Commissioner Horton. Glad you're back, glad you're with us. And, uh, just wanted to bring this item of business to your attention tonight. It is the Georgia Department of Transportation Local Administered Project Certification Process. And part of that is adopting a Title Six Non-Discrimination Agreement. And the Local Administered Project Manual sets forth, uh, uniform guidelines and practices for local agencies to undertake and oversee certain core aspects of federal aid projects with Georgia DOT. It's a benefit to us to be able to move some of the projects ahead quicker. The state Route fifty-three roundabouts is, uh, they're federal aid projects. And so to manage those, we need to update our, um, our LAP certification. But, um, and then part of it is the Title Six Non-Discrimination Agreement. Uh, we would have to update those agreements and approve those every year, send those in. And Georgia DOT policy is for jurisdictions under a hundred thousand in population. We can adopt Georgia DOT's agreements and, and policies. And then it requires us to designate a responsible point of contact to coordinate, coordinate the Title Six efforts and to conform to the DOT's policies for report, reporting and statistical data. And, uh, I reached out to Georgia DOT to see what that entailed because it said, uh, establish a, a, um, civil rights unit. Well, Georgia DOT has that. They have the staff for that, but he's, uh, the guy I talked to said that a lot of smaller jurisdictions, it's housed inside the public works. So that would be my office. That would be collecting the data if we have complaints and, and reporting those annually to GDOT and then bringing this agreement back before the board each year for renewal. Any questions about the, the LAP or the Title Six?
Any questions? We are all at consent agenda on this one?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Any public comment? Any virtual? Very good. Our next item is to discuss the Water Resources Kundal Environmental Management Internship Grant. Nikki?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Oconee County Resources Department is the recipient of the Kundal Environmental Management Internship Grant through the Association County Commissioners of the Georgia Civic Affairs Foundation. Uh, the Georgia County Internship Program created in two thousand and ten, uh, receives funding through the foundation to fund internships for college students and recent graduates, uh, so we can give them kind of firsthand knowledge of the county government, how it operates and, uh, you know, as certain aspects of it. Now, the grant awards the cost of the wages at a rate of twelve dollars per hour for each hour worked up to two hundred hours for maximum reimbursement of two thousand four hundred dollars per intern. Uh, the financial impact of the grant will be, uh, one thousand two hundred dollars to the Water Resource Department. That is, uh, part of the grant, uh, we agreed to match a twelve hundred dollar funding for the grant. And, uh, it is, uh, recommended that the board would execute this agreement.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
No.
I don't, I know everybody at this table remembers, uh, Mr. Jim Kundal, or Doctor, excuse me. I was a professor at University of Georgia for over thirty years, uh, was a science advisor to the Georgia General Assembly for over thirty years and had a positive impact on environmental policy through his involvement in water planning and, uh, environmental issues. So we're very proud, uh, to earn this award for, because he was a great benefit in Oconee County. Uh, no additional questions? We can put this on consent agenda for acceptance?
Yes.
Yes. Any public comments? Parker? Thank you very much. Next item is to, an update of the Design Services Request for Qualifications for the State Route Fifty-three Roundabouts.
Just wanted to come for you and just give you a kind of an update of where we are in the design process. So we did send out an RFQ request for qualifications. We received eight proposals back from consulting firms. Have gone through those, shortlisted and got, uh, four, uh, four firms, the top four firms. And we sent the second phase of the RFQ out to them. And that was the technical approach, the past history, their, their references. And so we've, uh, our, our selection committee has reviewed the technical approach and, and right now is reaching out to the references, checking those, verifying those. And, uh, I was thinking we might be able to get everything done this week, but it looks like it would come back before the board at the agenda, at the August Agenda Setting Meeting for a recommendation. Because once we get the top ranked firm, then we'll negotiate a price with them. And this is following a qual, qualification based selection that, uh, GDOT requires for federal aid projects. So we're following their guidelines with that. But it looks like it'll probably be the August Agenda Setting Meeting when we present a recommended consultant.
Very good. Want to hold you a spot just in case, or are you pretty confident though?
We still have to do the negotiation.
Okay.
I was hopeful we might get there, but I don't know if we.
No problem.
I don't know if we'll get it done in a week.
All right, very good. Thank you, sir. Next item is to discuss the new alcohol license.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, we have a new alcohol license called Los Primos Taqueria Express. This will be in the location where Golden Chick was. It will have a drive-through. Um, they are, this is a business that's also owned by the Lock, Lockabana folks. So Elias Hernandez will be the registered agent. I haven't seen Elias here tonight. I don't know. I mean, we've still got him in the ordinance. They're supposed to attend. So that's totally up to y'all, how y'all want to proceed with that. But, um, they are looking for a twenty twenty alcohol license, which will carry them through the end of this year. We will be doing our renewals in September, so they will have to also apply for the renewal one. Okay?
Any questions? Uh, why don't you go ahead and contact him? We'll just leave it on the regular agenda. We won't put it on consent.
Okay.
So he can comply.
Give him a chance to come next week. Okay, very good.
Next item is to consider the twenty twenty-one special local option sales tax referendum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. This is the final act in a fairly long process to, uh, get the SLOs, folks, ready for the November general election and what this is. Uh, you previously approved the IGA with the four municipalities, which had the, did the proportional share of the, uh, sales tax referendum over the six years. What this is, is the approving of the referendum ballot language and ultimately asking the, um, Board of Elections to issue the call, uh, which they would do tomorrow night. And so, uh, based on timing, this is something we will need, uh, action tonight. The, um, there's a special called meeting of the Board of Elections tomorrow where they would issue the call. And then the election will ultimately be held on the general election November. Happy to answer any questions?
We've had several meetings on this topic over the last several months. If anybody has any questions at this time. So look, open it up for public comment. Any public comment tonight? Anything from Zoom?
No, right there.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve twenty twenty-one special local option sales tax SLOs referendum for the November third, twenty twenty election ballot.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. All right, we do have the need for an executive session in reference to personnel.
I make a motion, we go into executive session, discuss personnel matters.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.